When does that happen?
Thirty-two seconds. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We would please stand and salute our American flag, which is led by Councilor Doyle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording. Secretary, will you take the roll call, please?
Councilor Doyle?
Here.
Councilor Bowden?
Here.
Councilor Bear?
Present.
Councilor Hamel?
Here.
Here. Okay, roll call's been taken care of. Okay, staff in attendance this evening at this table is Scott Myers, our city manager, and Donna Woodman, our finance director. And we also have with us here this evening our city clerk, Mary. And so if we could, I'd like to come up front here for a moment. What I'd like to do is make a presentation here this evening about our city clerk. Been with us, I think, around fifteen years.
Twelve.
Twelve. And she's been a city clerk for, what, eight or nine years? Something like that. Nine years. So she's been doing a great job. We hate to see her leave, but you have to do what you have to do. And she's very excited on where she's going, so if I could get her to come up here. Give them the big presentation. Don't cry, because I will too.
Thank you, Armin.
Would you like to say something?
No.
No?
Thank you.
I'd like to call upon these men, if they give us a report on our mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Bolduc. So I did receive an email from Mayor Engler over the weekend. He did have his surgery on the afternoon of September 29th. He spent a handful or a little bit more days in the hospital with recovery. First couple of days, he said, I'll use the PG version, the days were rough the first couple of ones, but he's at a point now where, while still in some pain and recovering, he can get comfortable and relax. He indicated that within a week or so. He'd be meeting with the team to identify the plan for the chemotherapy that he's most likely going to be undergoing for about six months. They're going to work through the chemo plan and get him to a point where he's accepting and at a good place in that. And then once he's stable in that sense, and I'm not minimizing, you know, what chemotherapy can do, but once they can, you know, moderate it and get it to a good point, he's hopeful about coming, returning back to New Hampshire and to Laconia and being able to continue his chemotherapy back here. So at this point, early indications are he probably will still be out in California through the end of November, early December timeframe, to be firmed up as things unfold for him over the coming weeks. He was reading the agenda online and knowing what's going on tonight, and he thought this was kind of an easy agenda, and we ought to be out of here in about 20 minutes, was his target. So I'm just sharing that with you.
We have a challenge, right?
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
The mayor has thrown down the gun.
Okay, we have some presentations this evening, so I'll call on Councilor Hamel to come to the microphone and make these presentations.
Every once in a while, the rest of us has a chance to do some good things, so now that the mayor's gone, we're all stepping in and trying to carry on here. These are the front porch awards that are given out by the city. And the council quite a few years ago adopted this award to show thanks for citizens in Laconia that update their property and do different things to it. The city itself has been on a quest to try and improve our image also by the different things we've done around, and we appreciate everything that the neighborhood does also. So we have five of them to give out tonight, and hopefully they're all here. If they're not, then we'll make sure they get them. The first one is the front porch award. This certificate is awarded to Richard O'Brien Jr. and Ann O'Brien. Property located at 262 Pleasant Street in Laconia, in recognition of your efforts to enhance and improve the appearance of your property in our community. And we thank you, and it's signed by Mayor Ed Engler. Are the O'Briens here? Yes, all right.
Thank you very much.
So we'd like to present that to you. And if you'd like, just stand up here, and we'll see how many more are here for this tonight. So thank you for what you did to your property. It's very nice. Anybody goes by Pleasant Street, take a nice look at the big steeple there, and everything's all freshly painted. It's really nice. The next one is another front porch award, and this is to Stephen and Joanne Farini. Property located at 180 North Street in Laconia, New Hampshire. Are they here tonight? I don't see anybody jumping up, so.
Oh, no, does this mean we're on TV?
We are. Smile. Okay, the next award goes to Brett and Susan Beliveau. Are they here? No. Oh, okay. That property is located at 141 Lafayette Street in Laconia, and they did a really nice job of taking care of the front yard there and the front of the building. Looks nice. All right, we'll try again. Do we have a Robert Silly Jr. or Linda Silly here tonight? All right, come on up. This front porch award is to Robert Silly and Linda Silly. The property is located at 19 Chester Court in Laconia, and in recognition for the efforts you did for improving your property in our community. So thank you very much. We have one left. Excuse me. This is for John and Mary Ann Dagnault. Are they here tonight? Well, this is property located at 69 Baldwin Street in Laconia, and there again did a beautiful job on redoing their property, so we thank them. So we thank you very much for coming. And while I'm here, I'm just going to take a quick minute to thank Mary for all her years of service. She's been just spectacular at running the city clerk's department down there. If we have a question, a technical question, she was the one to go to. And I remember her sitting like Cheryl's doing with Ann was here, and Ann kind of showed her the ropes. So you can see, that was a little while ago. But Mary's done an excellent job, and I've been proud of her. And take good care and good luck in your new venture. Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda, we don't have any council proclamations. Acceptance of the minutes from previous meeting, regular meeting minutes of September 25th, 2017. I guess we don't need a motion for that. Anybody have any changes or any change to the document at all? I didn't see anything wrong with it. So hopefully we're all set, so we don't have to vote on that. It's accepted as presented. Now we have consent and action items, request by Titanium Sports of the City on the Lakes Tri Festival on City Park property. The document is on page 18 and 20 through 23.
So how would you accept a motion?
Yes.
Move that, approve it?
I'll second it.
Nobody has any question? Do you have a question?
I have a question. Scott, did they do that this year, a smaller version?
Yeah, so this is the same organizer who we approved last year, and they were intending last year to do the smaller sprint, more of a weekend warrior triathlon, if you will, even though it's still a very tough challenge, and the half Ironman type. Just because of the timing of when they got the approval and the one in Guilford wasn't going to occur, there wasn't really enough time for them to do the marketing they needed to do for the half Ironman, because a lot of the folks who train for that are training for one event a year or two events a year and really kind of booked their calendar months ahead of time. So they did not run the half one, but their intention was, they ran a very successful sprint one, had a good number of participants, was well received, city staff, Parks and Rec, and police and fire, had a very easy time working with the organizers, was a good working relationship. And I went down there toward the end of it, it was very professionally done with the timing systems and how they did it, so very successful. We're pleased that the organizer's back to request the dates again for the middle of August to do both of them. And with your approval tonight, it's already been approved by Parks and Rec, with your approval tonight, now they'll have the opportunity to start marketing now for that large-scale event coming next August, which I think will be a good draw for the region.
I guess also my question is on the financial impact as far as city and police. Did they pay, do we have a, did they pay a bill back to us for last year?
They paid the full amount for the detail, so they were good on that. I believe in your background information, you'll also see that they're planning on donating a portion of the profits that they make out of the event this coming year to the WOW Trail, I believe.
Okay, and so there's no problem? Have they been updated on the amount of police and fire that was going to be required?
We had quoted it for them last year, because obviously the longer one not only impacts us, but they had to coordinate with other neighboring communities, because I think the bicycle portion, if I recall, went out to New Hampton sticks in my mind.
Yeah, I think Bristol.
So they were coordinating on a regional basis, but again, they were with our special events committee, provided us the level of insurance reimbursed, and like I say, have been a good entity for us to be working with as a city.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Scott.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Ananamous. Okay. Now, next is citizen comments for matters not on the agenda this evening. Do we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak to something that is not on our agenda? Don't see anybody's coming up, so we'll go to the next item. Interviews. I hope I don't make too much of an error here on this name. Greg Solowski, seeking appointment to the vacant electrician position on the Building Code Board of Appeals for a five-year term expiring at the end of March of 2022. And the document is on page 24 to 26, so. Do we have any? Is Greg here? Right up? Speak to us, or?
Hi, Greg.
Greg.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So do you have anything you would like to tell us, or this is something that we haven't had for quite a few years, so?
I'm really, it's kind of new to me. I was asked to put an application in, and I did, and I was just, I'm really not even sure what the position entails, but I'm open to, you know, serving in whatever capacity I can. I'm a contractor, electrical contractor myself, and I've been in the business for about 35 years. I've been an instructor for the apprenticeship program here in Laconia, and did that for about five years. Started my business about eight years ago.
Yes, Councilor.
Greg, thank you for coming forward. In terms of your experience in being a contractor, any perspectives on how you think we can improve as a city with respect to this area of code?
Well, again, I'm really not sure what the position entails. I'm open to, you know, learning and, you know, serving in whatever capacity I could, but my value, my overall evaluation, because I work with a lot of landlords and homeowners, you know, upgrading electrical in houses, so we do, that's what we primarily do. We do commercial industrial as well, but our primary, so I'm, for me, it's a personal, I take personal, you know, pride in seeing these old houses renovated with the old electrical that's, you know, sometimes 80 years old and can pose a severe hazard, and seeing it replaced and upgraded. So I noticed that a lot of landlords are buying property, and it's changing, I'm seeing changing hands in, from, you know, people who have had, you know, these properties, these apartment buildings for a number of years with very little maintenance done to them, and we're doing it, we've done several of them over this past year. So I see a lot of landlords investing the money into upgrading them, not just partially, but fully. I mean, we're talking, so that's kind of what I do, but again, I'm not really sure what this position holds.
I guess what I was getting at is what you were doing when you do work in the city in terms of getting work done and understanding, also since you're an instructor, you, I'm sure, try to work to teach your students to a high standard.
Correct.
I guess, how do you feel in terms of where we stand as a city when you've gone to get approvals and things like that?
Everything has worked well. I said, I, I was, actually, that position when, as an instructor, was terminated several years ago. During the recession, we had a low student turnout. I think when I started, I had almost 20 students, and by the time I, when they combined my position with another year's student teacher, I was down to three students per year. So there was that gap in having people coming into the trade. But overall, I'm pleased with the way the city has, you know, sought to, you know, keep up with the, making sure inspections are done properly and having personnel to do that. It's always, I've always worked, you know, it's always worked well, and I'm not sure if I'm answering the question, but I'm trying to.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Ham. Thank you. Thanks for coming up, coming, Greg, and applying for the position. I've known Greg for over 17 years, and Greg's a fantastic electrician. And when I saw that position open, and it's been open for a long time, I saw him somewhere, and I kind of grabbed him by the neck and said, "How would you like to volunteer for the city and do some code enforcement," I believe is what it is. To tell you the truth, I'm not even sure what the whole thing is with that position.
Okay.
But I think if you get with Scott or the planning department or somebody that they can fill you in, Greg is amazingly qualified for this job. You know, he may not know what the position involved, but he sure knows a lot about electrical, and I think he'll be fantastic. And I think there's a plumbing position open too, if I remember right.
It is, so the Building Code Board of Appeals is set up to hear appeals that might be filed by a citizen or a property owner by our building inspector decision. So it's a citizen-based board, and it does call for specific members of specific professional trade organizations, electrician being one, plumbing being another. There's a general contractor type of position, so it's putting people who've got that background, who if they are hearing an appeal based on a decision that city staff would make, you know, have a skill set there, which is very specific to it. Barring having the Building Code Board of Appeals, I believe that any appeal would end up going to the zoning board of adjusters, which maybe isn't, no knock against those folks, but maybe don't have the specific skill set that some of these professional trades folks have. So that's the purpose of the board, and you're right, we've been challenged to fill those and thrilled that you come forward, and hopefully it's one of those things that we don't need to call upon a lot, but it's there as a checks and balance in times that we do.
So basically, it would be if a homeowner objects to what the code enforcement person says that he has to do to complete his project.
Right, they could come in and appeal.
Okay.
It's almost like some communities have an ethics commission to review ethical complaints in the hopes that you never have to use your ethics commission, meaning you don't have those complaints. But this is that checks and balance, and barring this board being populated, those are heard by the zoning board.
Okay, so it's not a board that meets every month or whatever?
Nope, it's a kind of an on-demand type of need.
So that might be pretty easy, Greg. But I'll give you a challenge. Find us a plumber, a master plumber to.
And I will, okay, I know a few.
You must know a few here in Laconia.
I do, but I'll see what I can do.
You do a little twist in there. Thanks for coming in, Greg. Really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Are we going to wait to vote on this at our next meeting?
That's been the typical procedure, yes.
Very good. All right, so that takes care of Greg. Now we have nominations, appointments, and elections. Two, we have two. Three, repeat it?
Two.
Two. Okay, Karen Horn, seeking appointment to the Downtown Tiff District Advisory Board to a three-year term expiring at the end of August of 2020.
And also we have a.
We also have a, one position, but two people.
Yeah, there's one position.
So mention his name.
So I have to read the other one too at the same time? The other is Chris Condemetracki, seeking an appointment to the Downtown Tiff District Advisory Board to the three-year term expiring at the end of August of 2020. So we have two people seeking that appointment tonight.
I move to appoint Chris Condemetracki to the Downtown Tiff District Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2020.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Bound and second by Councilor Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hand. We have a six in favor. So you are, he will be the next, this will be on our Downtown Tiff Advisory Board. Okay. Now, let's see. Appointment of Dean Treffithen, Planning Director, and Randy Lofflin, Assistant Planning Director, as Commissioners of the Lakes Region Planning Commission, to four-year terms expiring at the end of June 2021. Everybody had a chance to read. It's on page 33. The document here.
So moved.
I have a motion moved by Councilor Bear, second by Councilor Ham. Any other? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's great. Communications, I guess we don't have any. That's good.
Speed it up.
Public hearings. Public hearing regarding the question of permitting the operation of a New Hampshire Keno 603 game at qualifying establishments within the city on the November 7, 2017 election ballot. Okay, that's a public hearing, and it's open at 7:23.
Mayor Protem, if you could read the second paragraph into the record on page 34.
Page 34. That's the discussion?
Yeah.
Notice of this public hearing was made on, in the September 30, 2017, and October 3, 2017, additions of Laconia Daily Sun at City Hall, the Gale Memorial Library, Laconia Community Center, and the offices of the Laconia School District. Okay, so everybody had a chance to see that, and hopefully we will be able to take care of this position also. I'll take care of this item. Do we vote on it this evening?
You can open the public hearing, and then you can see if there's any members of the public.
Okay, it'll be open at 7:24. And anybody that would like to speak to this issue, please come forward to the mic, state your name and where you live, and what you'd like to tell us, if anything. I don't see anybody moving. Okay, then we'll close the public hearing at 7:24. I like that clock up there. All right, it's the only public hearing we have this evening. Next is the mayor's report. We've already heard from him, so hopefully we wish him a speedy recovery. Yes?
I don't know whether we'd be, I know we have an official from the lottery commission here. I don't know if we'd be willing to take the item out of order to, so she could take back a consideration.
We don't actually have any other action tonight, so the city council approved placing this on the ballot back in September, and by the Senate bill that passed in the law, it said communities are required to hold a public hearing within 15 to 30 days of the election to just allow the public an opportunity to comment on the question that's on the ballot. So we fulfilled that obligation.
We don't have to do anything else.
You don't have to do anything. There's no further action taken by the council. You've already approved to place this on the ballot. The voters will have this in front of them in the November election.
I guess I'd just note the council did get input at its, along the way here on this particular item.
Right, I think we had four, or five, or six people who spoke in favor of it when we had it on, about putting it on the ballot.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
And you said something too, didn't you?
Yes, you did. Okay. Now we have committee reports.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We did have a land and buildings committee report this evening, and it was to discuss the food vendors on the boardwalk at the Weir's, and we had input from Councilor Joe Driscoll and Paul Fitzgerald, representing the two different parties, and they explained, you know, basically the same situation of the site of the Ames's Building from the boardwalk, and we asked that the lawyers go back and discuss what, the height of the trailers there that are on the boardwalk, to see if something could be adjusted there. It was brought up about possibly relocating them to a different parcel that the city owns, so some discussion will be made with that also. So basically, I think we didn't vote on anything tonight to let them go back and discuss with their clients on what they could come up with if there was a solution between the two parties. So what I'd like to do is maybe schedule another land and buildings meeting at the end of this month, try and move this along. So I believe that would be the 23rd, correct, Scott?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have something to add?
So we also got input from the new.
The new owner of the pier.
New owner of the pier in terms of the line of sight issue as well, which was helpful to get.
Anyone else? Yes. Councilor Bound.
Did, I'll be point blank. Did you get a sense that these two dueling vendors, I'll call them, not name names, were looking for a resolution, or did you get a sense that?
I can't say that I did. I think it's probably gonna, you know, we can, we'll wait and see what the discussion is about the new piece of property that they're looking, I mean, that down at the beach is what they're looking at, but I don't think that's a great place. I don't see how they would even want to go there, to be honest with you. So I think we'll wait and see when they get back to us on maybe taking down the upper part of the vendor booth.
Reducing the height of their.
And I think that's something that the committee or the council as a whole should look at on height requirements on the boardwalk. You know, how high. You know, how high are we going to allow these tents or vendor booths to go?
Are there any height requirements now?
No.
Height restrictions?
No. No. So that's something I think we can look into separately. So I think it's probably going to come down to a decision of the council, in my mind.
Okay.
But I want to wait, give them a chance to talk.
Yeah. I was just trying to get an overall sense of whether there was a spirit of cooperation or a spirit of, I want my way.
I didn't hear it yet, so, if you know what I mean. So we'll schedule another meeting of land and buildings on the 23rd, and I'm probably thinking 6:15 instead of 6:00. I don't think we're going to need much more than a half hour. Do you agree?
I agree.
Okay. So, so 6:15 on the October 23. Is that agreeable?
Yep. Anybody else have anything at the table? None? Okay. We'll go to the Government Operations, Councilor Doyle. Would you...
That's for later.
That's for later?
Right. Yep. We'll discuss that later.
Well, I got it down here concerning the City Code, Chapter 113, Animals.
Mm-hmm. Under unfinished business.
You want it under unfinished...
It's under unfinished business on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Okay. See, public reports. Don't have any? Citizen comments, request to comment on current agenda items. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak to us on a current agenda item? You do come forward, state your name and address up here on the microphone.
My name's Mark Burrell. I live at 68 Warren Street. I have two packets here. I didn't have a chance to get them completed. One's complete, one's two pages short, but the last two pages are just comments. Sorry. Sorry, I didn't get the staple together. I just got out of work, so I just threw it all together. So I've come before this council asking that Chapter 113.5 be amended so that unless there's a physical fence surrounding the property excluding electric fences, all dog owners must be outside with their dogs or have their dogs tied up so they cannot come charging off the owner's property. As you know, the reason I have requested this is because my dog and I were attacked by a dog who charged through the electric fence surrounding the property. After further communication with the dog owners, they confess that the dog does this on a regular basis. They stated the dog gets excited and does not care about the shock it receives. After several different hearings, it was recommended that my request to have Chapter 113.5 be amended to include such language go forward, bringing us here today. It was stated at the September 11, 2017, meeting by nine people that the proposed amendment should not be changed and that my request should be dismissed. Ruben Bassett, 103 Franklin Street, expressed his concerns because there are already items in place to address when the dog comes off the property, and the issue seems to be brought up that enforcement needs to happen. Our Bassett claims to have spoken with the animal control officer and states she has not been contacted about this proposal, and she should be before this is decided. In response to this, I would state that, one, I personally spoke with the animal control officer soon after Paula Glad's dog charged off her property. I discussed with her my proposal. The animal control officer at that time indicated to me that she agreed that things needed to be changed. However, after recently speaking with her, she indicates that unless paid to come before this council, she has nothing to say about the matter. She further indicated that she had way too much on her plate to waste time, waste her time in coming to a meeting. Further, each of the meetings concerning this change, this council inquired as to whether or not the animal control officer should be present to weigh in on the subject. She was never ordered or requested to appear, so our Bassett has provided false information to this council. Further, while there are items in place to address when a dog is off the property, there is nothing in place that prevents a dog from coming off the property. All Chapter 113.5 states is that it shall be unlawful to intentionally permit any dog to run at large within the city of Laconia. To this end, the owner shall keep the dog on a leash or within an enclosure whenever the dog is not on the property of the owner. In response to Paula Glad's admittance that her dog did in fact charge my dog, but only in play, that is also false information provided to this council. Her dog was in full attack mode, and the look of horror on her face indicated she knew it was not play. Further, her statement that more should have been done to investigate the unreported infractions. I chose not to report the incident because I was aware of the current leash law and did not want to escalate the situation. She came out and apologized, and that would have been enough for me, but upon returning and hearing that her dog did this on a regular basis was what prompted me to request this change. Her dog breaking through the fence on a regular basis and not fixing the problem is the intentional act of permitting her dog to run at large. It has been suggested that this council look at the magnitude of what I am proposing. Apparently, Mr. Fitzgerald has not done his homework. He states that there has only been one complaint over the last several years. Admittedly, while there has been few nuisance complaints over the years, whether it is because people chose not to complain, as I did, there have been complaints. Although not in the city of Laconia in July of 2013, two women walking along Halls Hill Road in Guilford were bitten by a German Shepherd that was able to breach the electric fence around the owner's property. Further, I have presented to you article after article, which is the pamphlet that I've just given you, of dogs breaching electric fences from around the country. While some dogs have not breached the electric fence yet, it is inevitable that at some point, all dogs, no matter how highly trained, will breach the electric fence. This may be in part to the dog not caring about the shock value, or due to the owner not keeping up on the maintenance. In all the testimony of the nine people who are opposed to the changes, their common theme is, they all state that the electric fences work, and they all do not want to have to stay outside with their dogs. It is the not wanting to stay outside with their dog that in fact makes them irresponsible pet owners. Aaron Hayward, 66 Penny Lane, addressed the council regarding the current concerns of invisible fencing in the amendments proposed to Chapter 113. He indicated to this council that they were responsible pet owners by installing an invisible fence on the property for his husky, and it works very well. He also stated that this seems to be a small problem that is being made out to be, and one person should not have this much impact on a decision. Again, I ask you, reference the articles I have supplied that indicate otherwise. While it is true, I am only one person, I am the one person who was attacked, and I have chosen to speak out. How many others have not? Newbold Leroy, 1388 Old North Main Street, feels that the proposed changes to Chapter 113 would be overregulating and unnecessary. The city attorney is unneeded for one complaint. The members of the subcommittee that recommended the proposed language is changed decided that the city attorney was needed. It is a legal issue that is being addressed, and the city attorney was needed to draft the legal language. No disrespect to this person, but he has no knowledge of the laws concerning the changing of city ordinance as well as other state laws. With this being said, and having given the evidence before you, State Title for Animals, Chapter 466 Dogs and Cats, Licensing of Dogs Under 466, colon, 39, city or town bylaws. This council, being the governing body for the city of Laconia, is authorized to make such additional bylaws and regulations concerning the licensing and restraining of dogs as it deems reasonable. Further, under the State Title III Towns, City, Village, Districts, and Unincorporated Places, Chapter 31, Powers and Duties of Towns, Powers to Make Bylaws, Section 31, colon, 39B, authorizes this council to take preventive measures that prevent horses and other domestic animals, and a dog as a domestic animal, from going at large in any public place in the town. Requiring people who do not have a physical fence surrounding their property to be outside with their dog, or restraining their dog by tethering, or for lack of better wording, chaining up their dog, is simply that, a preventive measure. Although it is not a guarantee that the dog will not leave the property, it decreases the risk that the dog will leave. I am not asking that people who own dogs erect a physical fence around their property. As a former fence builder, I recognize a significant cost to erect a suitable fence to keep a dog enclosed, and I also recognize that a physical fence like the electric fence will not always keep a dog on the property. But the chances of a dog going over or under a physical fence are significantly less than that of a dog going through an electric fence. I am 54 years of age, and my family has trained and showed dogs of all breeds since before I was born. My father and stepmother and stepsisters own and operate Burrell Handling LLC in Danville, New Hampshire. With that knowledge, I am not afraid of dogs, and therefore, I am not bringing this request out of fear for myself. I bring this fear, this, out of fear that if someone's dog breaks out of their property and maliciously attacks my dog, or another dog, and severe damage is done by either animal, the repercussions that follow will be significant. And that's all I have on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? None? Okay. Oh. Where are we here, anyway?
City manager.
What's that? Didn't we just cross, haven't we done that, right? That's what we just did.
Yeah. City manager.
Yeah. Who's next? City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Included in your packet tonight, you have two reports for the first meeting of the month. The first one is the Financial and Operational Trends Report. I'll turn your attention to the top of page 35. We have the Building Permit Report, which is tied into one of our tax cap calculations, so the gain in new construction value from building permits. Again, the assessing year runs April 1st to March 31st, so we're through September 30th right now. We're at a $15 million level year-to-date for the assessing year. Put it in comparison, a year ago, we were at $12.3 million. Two years ago, we were just short of $25 million. So a little bit better than last year, but not as good in increased value as we were two years ago. On the bottom of, toward the bottom of page 36, you'll see two large revenue streams the city collects, one being property tax collection. So the July warrant is out, and we're a little over 97% collected. You can look at the previous five or six years right above it, and not only in terms of dollars collected, but in percentage collected, we're stronger than we were any of the prior, I guess, six years. I think that ties into a little bit of the strengthening of the economy and people able to pay their taxes on time. Motor vehicle registration, again, at the bottom of that page, we're running at just under 24%. Comparable a year ago at this time, we were around 23.5%. I know we had a conversation there about trying to watch that number and determine whether or not we were going to hit it, and I had indicated, the clerk had shared with me, that the second half of the year registrations do tend to be a lot stronger, especially in the April, May, June timeframe, and that bore true. Last year, we ended up well over 100% of projections. So we are running ahead of last year's pace, and that's even with an increased amount that we're estimating for revenue. So while we're not at a 25% level, which would have us on target a quarter of the way through the fiscal year, I'm still comfortable that that number should not cause any alarm at this time. On the bottom of page 38, you can see the impact fee revenue year-to-date is running around $16,500, and across all various categories, and then the total that's sitting in the various accounts right now is just short of $105,000. Also, on the bottom of page 39, we're probably at the end of the boat registration year, but on a percentage basis, we're running over 19% collected in the fiscal year, and that's obviously our slowest time, because a lot of boats are registered in the tail end of the fiscal year, so April, May, June versus latter months. But we're running around 19% of our target rate now. In the prior couple of years, we were in the 12% or 14% range. And I guess I can say I'm happy to report that we don't have any winter maintenance yet, seeing that we just wrapped up September. The Economic Development Report is in your packet as well, starting on page 40. You can see unemployment rate for Laconia, the county, Concord, Manchester, and the state, all trending well below 3%. And in fact, Laconia is at 2.4%. A year ago at this time, we were looking at 2.6%. And then on page 41, we're through seven months out of the year with our inflation number. So you can see that we're running at annualized year-to-date about 2.1% for the Consumer Price Index, which is the second component of what we use in our tax cap calculation. I've got a couple of more things to report, but I will stop there and see if there's any questions on those two reports.
Help me. Why is, why do we look at spikes from 2.5 and 2.7? I'm looking at the CPI report. Is there an explanation of why we're on the downswing now, with this little fluctuation?
Some of that had to do with energy costs. Oil and gasoline prices dropped, so the Consumer Price Index is really a basket of goods. It's everything from clothing to food to energy to different commodities that all go into a basket of what an average household would use in their day-to-day lives. And that's how they measure inflation. There's different inflation measures that you can use for different industries. So, you know, an automobile may be more focused on steel and petroleum-based products for tires and stuff than a household would. But that's just a gauge of what inflation is running month to month. I think we saw the decrease because we saw a drop in some oil prices, drop down into the low $40-an-hour, $40-a-barrel range, after we had some of the weather events, particularly in Houston, where a lot of the refining was done, and gasoline prices shot up pretty quickly. I think you'll see that reflect maybe a little bit in the tail end of the August number, but probably more likely, you'll see a jump in the September number. So you can get spikes sometimes due to weather, sometimes due to droughts or different crop conditions, and may impact, you know, meat prices, but as you average it out over the year, that blends together.
So our tax cap is going to be driven by events that occur in Houston or Florida, and that kind of stuff, wholly unrelated to what's happening here in the Lakes Region?
Well, it is impacting our cost of doing business. So we do heat our buildings in the winter, some of it with oil and some of it with natural gas. We do put gasoline in our fleet vehicles, so it is driven by that. Not everything that was within the CPI ties directly to what a municipality uses, but in some cases, you know, when you factor the schools in it as well, there's a food component with school lunches, even though there's a revenue for that. If cost of food goes up or down, that certainly impacts the cost of meals produced. We all share heating. Oil is a big component of it, because that's a large component of our asphalt paving in the city. And, you know, we spend over a million and a half dollars a year on paving projects. So there is some impact. It's not a perfect, not a perfect science.
And it doesn't really, I mean, it's not, it's not really local, or state, or even regional. It's driven by forces that, even international forces, in terms of the prices that, how that consumer...
There are, and there are different CPI benchmarks. This is the one that was adopted with a charter change language to it. There are regional CPIs. There are industrial CPIs for more industrial-based commodities. So there are a number to look at, but the charter says this is the one that we are following, and until that tells me something different, that's the one I'm going to put in the report.
I'm just trying to get a sense of where we're getting these numbers from.
That is where we are. So CPIU stands for Consumer Price Index Urban, and that's the all urban average to it.
Okay.
Let me get those through to the Bureau of Labor Statistics of the U.S. government.
Just opening up a discussion.
So I can move on to two other items for you. The first one, certainly we should be recognizing the passing of State Representative Don Flanders. Don has served this community well, and you probably, you know, know far more than I do, just being a short timer here at 60 years, but certainly in the state representative role he currently served in, the city councilor, Mayor Protem, I believe, hospital board, Lakes Region General Hospital Board, served in his profession on the insurance board and was recognized statewide and nationally. So, first of all, thoughts with family on Don's passing, and he was a true public servant and really responded and I think represented the city well on a number of fronts. That being said, the discussion about whether or not we're choosing to request a special election is something that I would bring before you, and if there's a desire to do that, the clerk has looked at the RSA and determined that if we were going to make the request, we would be requesting that a primary be held on January 9. And again, that would have to be a citywide primary, because that seat was voted on in all wards. And then, similar to what happened with the election we had this fall, if there was a need for a primary, that would count as the primary. If there wasn't a need for a primary after the filing period closed, then it would follow the same process, and the Secretary of State would determine that this would be the one of the election. So if we needed a primary, and then a regular election, January 9, I'm sorry, it'd be 2018, January 9, 2018, and then February 27, 2018, would be the dates that we're looking at.
We also have another representative not seated, or hasn't taken... We also have another representative not seated or hasn't taken over since I remember.
Representative Tilton was sworn in a couple of weeks ago, when Representative St. Clair was sworn in, and I think I shared with you a few months back that he, when I'd spoken with Frank Tilton, Representative Tilton, it was his hope that he would be back in the area for medical treatment he was receiving down in the Bethesda Hospital. Actually saw Representative Tilton at the train celebration day, he was downtown. So he's, he's here, he got sworn in a couple of weeks ago, and all indications are, he's ready to, ready to move forward.
When do we have to make the decision to request a special election?
I think we'd like you to make it now, so that we can get the request in, because there's a certain length of time that you have to have the filing period and have to be so many days, so the more we delay, the later into the session we go.
Yep.
And if we do need to have the primary and then a, then the, you know, I'll call it the general election, the special election after the primary, even by requesting it today, we're looking at February twenty-seventh, and a lot of the work in the House will happen in the first couple of months of the session before we get to change over day and then the bills swap chambers, so.
So when we take that up, under new business?
We could, we could add that to new business and have a conversation there, but I would think if we're going to do it, we should be moving on it to get that request in.
Yeah, I can.
And just like, go back to Representative Flanders, and like to, not sure what the right thing to do, but like for us somehow to find a way to recognize it in some ongoing way, in naming something or doing something that beyond that, I think, you know, he did a lot for the, the community in a low-key way. He did a lot for the Catholic school and the community, which raising funds there, and I think he was a real citizen and, you know, did it not just for himself, but for his fellow person, and it'd be nice if we could find a way to, to recognize that legacy. I think if, and I'm not as good at history as some of the rest of you, but I think his grandfather was also in the city affairs as well. Was he, was he mayor or was he a councillor? His uncle was the city clerk, I think, and I know his grandfather was also one of the original founders of the hospital in Laconia. It'd be nice to, to have a, like, Flanders' legacy in the community.
Great idea, open to ideas from you or anyone watching or listening to this, and we can certainly put together some ideas and bring them to the council for that type of formal recognition.
It's a good idea.
Okay. The final thing I have for you tonight is on a handout that was on your desk this evening with a scintillating topic of general assessing information. It's the time of year when there's a lot of assessing work that's coming to the forefront. There's been a few stories in the media, and that always raises some confusion of, you know, how come we're doing this or how come we're not doing that? So I tried to put together some, just some key points and simple bites to walk us through assessing, because it can be pretty dry, and for those who don't follow it, it's, it's can be confusing and it's not something you focus on every day. But the assessing calendar year is set by state law, so it runs April first to March thirty-first, and that basically means on a March thirty-first date, that's when you kind of close the books on valuation, so that's why we use the building permit value that we talked about a few minutes ago runs on that same date, because it's tied into the state law and all communities are on that calendar. So what the assessing department does is, they do a lot of things, but in particular, they review all sales, all new construction, which also would fall under building permits, and all building permits for additions, renovations to rooms, putting in pools, decks, sheds, any of those types of things, they go through, and the assessors go out and review all of those activities during the course of the year as permits are pulled and as sales occur closely thereafter. And then those values of new construction get factored into the valuation of the city's overall value of all our residential and commercial. We look at the sales, and within the sales, we look at what we have them assessed for, and we look at other similar types of sales, and we call them comps or do comparisons with them, and we try to get a sense of where things are selling in relation to the assessed value, are certain parts of the market, certain styles of housing selling at a, at a faster rate and for a higher price point than other areas. So we look at types of property, and even within things like single-family residential, you could have manufactured housing, you could have capes, colonials, contemporaries, ranches, there's different styles, different neighborhoods may move at different speeds. Starter homes may be more attractive to people in down economy years versus some of the second homes or some of the waterfront homes, maybe the discretionary spending isn't there, so maybe they aren't moving as quickly. Condominiums come, you know, in stronger some years than single-family residential. So there's a number of property classifications we have in Laconia, and even more so than some other communities, because if you think about it, we've got a fair number of lakes, so there's a lot of waterfront rules in, but even within our waterfront property, we have everything from seasonal camps with no year-round water and insulation and heating that people are using from April to October, let's say, and then you have your multimillion-dollar homes on the water. And some of the cottage colonies have now condominiumized into individual ownership, and we've got a lot of property classes. If you think of some other communities that maybe aren't as fortunate to be on the bodies of water that we are on, you know, theirs tend to fall into more silo, traditional types of categories. So we are, we are a little unique, as is the Lakes Region, in a lot of the property classes that we have. I put in the third paragraph, it's important to note that if a property sells after March thirty-first, that particular sale doesn't count until the next cycle, so there always can be a little bit of a lag to a sale occurring. That doesn't mean that that property won't move up or down in valuation with similar types of properties in its classification or neighborhood or style of home or waterfront. It just means that particular sale over how much over-assessed value or under-assessed value doesn't get counted specifically until we get into the next cycle. In addition, we are doing what we call a cyclical update every year, so our target is to try to overall get to twenty percent of our residential properties every year. Some of that are made up by sales and new construction and building permits, but beyond there, we target, try to get to a number, so we're hitting twenty percent of our cards, property cards for residential, there's about seventy-five hundred, so in a year, our target is to try to visit fifteen hundred properties. We know from the assessing presentation during the budget time, we had over four hundred sales this year and probably another couple hundred building permits, so this year, probably about half of them were driven either by sales or by building permits, which meant we go out and we try to hit another seven hundred or eight hundred properties to get us there. We've put out notices in the newspaper, you've seen it in the Laconia links, we try to mail out letters to those neighbors to say, we're in your neighborhood, performing a cyclical update, if you can schedule an appointment with us, great, if not, we'll do an outside measurement and verify from the outside without going in the property. So by doing twenty percent a year, again, we tie into state law and try to complete a complete citywide revaluation over a five-year period, and it's not a hard and fast, it's got to be five years, but generally speaking, that helps make the quality of your assessing solid versus not getting into all your properties, let's say, once every ten years. And again, there's can be some angst in doing a complete citywide revale all at one time, and I indicated here that the last time the city did that was in two thousand and ten. There were four hundred and forty-two abatement requests filed by residents. That means people who thought that their property wasn't valued at the right number. I can pretty much assure you, all these people thought that their property should have been assessed at a lower number. I can't imagine too many of them came in and said, oh, I don't think you caught this and that, can you raise my assessment for me? Comparison, two years later, by the time we had worked through four hundred and forty-two abatement requests from two thousand and twelve on, that number's been consistently below a hundred. So that kind of, I think, talks to the value of doing that rotating twenty percent a year cyclical versus doing it all at once every five years. In addition, the cost to it, you bring in an outside company, they bring in a crew who maybe doesn't know the, the area as well, the nuances, and, you know, assessing is a little bit black and white, but there is some gray area in there, and that's why I think our in-house staff knows some of those nuances. The higher the number of sales in any given year, the stronger our data is, and that just means we have more actual sales to look at. When you, again, we have so many different property classifications, if we only get a, a sale of a garden-style condominium, if there's only three of them across the city, there's not a lot of data to be looking at when you're only talking about three sales versus if there were fifteen or twenty garden-style condos that sold in a given year. It just validates your data. So again, looking at the sales numbers, the last two years, again, as the economy's been improving, we've had, we've had over four hundred sales the last two years, and in one year was closer to, I think it was over four hundred and eighty. The prior four years to the last two, our numbers were in the two hundred, high two hundred to mid-three hundred range. So again, I think the last couple of years, we've had more sales and therefore our data is stronger. So what happens after that March thirty-first? We start working on what we call the two thousand and seventeen update. Each year, we look at all the information from the sales, from the building permits, we look at trends, we look at classifications of property, and we tie that all out and determine where the strength is in the various components of the market, and then we update values. Values can go up and down in any given year. Sometimes you may have some values that increase at the same year that other certain styles of property decrease at the same time. So all property doesn't move at the same pace all the time. We put this all together, we start working with the Department of Revenue Administration. At this time of year, we have forms that we file with them through the assessing department, we have forms that we file with them through the finance department, they validate, there are numbers, but they go through and they, they look and they validate and they question if they don't, if they see things that aren't lining up, and then those are the values that ultimately go into helping setting our tax rate. And again, DRA uses our calculations and basically affirms our tax rate. I already spoke that all types of property don't go up and down at the same rate. Some years you may see condos go up more than duplexes, and other times waterfront goes up or down more than manufactured housing. There's always a lot of question about the tax rate. Well, the tax rate went up, the tax rate went down. The tax rate is really an answer to a mathematical question, equation. It's the amount to be raised in property taxes divided by the city's valuation in thousands, and that basically means if our valuation is two billion, we drop off the last three zeros and we count those number of thousands to it. And we divide that into it, and that becomes the tax rate. We estimate a tax rate when we're putting together the budget, but think about the timing. The budget gets put together through the early months of January, February, March, is presented to you in April, and we're targeting a tax rate, and if you think about it, the assessing year has just finished, and our staff hasn't even had a chance to compile all the data and set the trends and look at the comps and do everything, but we're targeting a tax rate based on, you know, the growth basically of the new construction value, the building permits number. So last year, we increased valuation by nineteen million. We estimate a tax rate. So as has happened here a few years ago, when the economy was down and values dropped, we had set the tax rate at one level, and because we lost thirty or forty, fifty million dollars in value on paper, that made the tax rate go up. But just because the tax rate went up didn't mean anybody's tax bill necessarily went any higher, because the tax rate came in higher than we projected it. It only meant that there were fewer thousands in valuation, and therefore the rate went up, but now your property was worth a few thousand dollars less, so you weren't paying taxes on as many thousands. This year, we're anticipating that our city valuation is going to go up, and I don't want to throw out a final number yet, because we're still in flux with information and working with DRA, but I'm comfortable in saying that we believe it's going to go up by over a hundred million dollars, which means that the tax rate that we set when we adopted the budget in July of twenty-two dollars and forty-eight cents per thousand is going to come down from there. And again, I think it will be in a twenty-one dollar and something range, again, all to be determined once we set the final tax rate, you know, toward the middle part, the latter part of November. And again, just because our tax rate goes from twenty-two something to twenty-one something doesn't necessarily mean your tax bill goes down because the tax rate went down, because now there are more thousands citywide in our valuation, and therefore, all things being equal, there's more thousands in your property value that we're basing it on. So that's, that's kind of the nuts and bolts of what happens during the year. The second page is really tied into a couple of measuring items that assessings use, and I'm not going to get into these, but the first one is coefficient of dispersion, the second one is, and that's the, the overall value of each type of property factored into the equation, into the median and the ratios. Very confusing. The second one is a price-related differential, that tells you whether your lower-end value, value property is assessed closer to a hundred percent or whether your higher-end property is assessed. So you want to make sure that your differential, you're not underweighting or overweighting any one category. The one thing to kind of take away of this, just knowing the year and knowing some sales won't get tracked, is there's a, there's a natural lag in some of these trends. There's a lag as of the economy improves and our assessments haven't quite caught up to it yet, and things are selling at a higher value than assessment, but the same thing happens when your assessments hit the high at the peak of the market and sales occurring and are occurring below your assessed value, it'll take a year to catch up. And if you look at the chart, a perfect example of that is in, let's start at the bottom in two thousand and four. If you go into the, the category that says EQ and percent, that's your sales ratio, it's basically taking what the assessment was, divided into what the sale price was, and if you hit everything a hundred percent perfect, that number would be a hundred percent. And we know some will be below and some will be above, but again, if you averaged out at the end of the year a hundred percent, you were collectively spot on. So you can see, starting in oh-four, oh-five, we were ninety-two percent, ninety-eight percent, ninety-six percent. We hit a hundred percent. Now, look at the year, we went to a hundred and five percent, two thousand and nine, and that's when the economy was going in the tank. So when you talk about a lagging indicator, our assessed values were actually a little bit higher than what the sale prices were coming in at, because of, it takes a year to run through that cycle to catch up. As you run up to where we are today, towards two thousand and sixteen, and we'll have two thousand and seventeen numbers again in a couple of months, you can see the economy's been increasing from fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, so we're kind of chasing a little bit, ninety-five percent, ninety-seven percent, ninety-three percent. So again, lagging a little bit behind, because, you know, in some cases, we're seeing some significant increases, especially this year, in some classification of property. We're seeing some fifteen percent increases in certain types of property this year. Over the coefficient of dispersion column, good quality assessing would run anything at a ten to fourteen percent range. When you get above fifteen percent, you're in a fair category, and anything higher than a twenty percent is considered poor quality. So again, we're very solid, and the reason we're probably never going to get in the excellent category with that is I hit upon it earlier. We have so many classifications of properties based on style and seasonal and waterfront and not, that we don't have a lot of sales concentrated in one silo. So if we only had capes and ranches and colonials and we had no waterfront, that'd be perfect. We'd have a hundred and fifty sales in each category. When you look at all of our breakdown of properties, we've got a lot of twos and fours and sixes, which can, cannot give you the data necessarily that you need to do in excellent quality, and it doesn't mean our staff isn't excellent, it's just you don't have the data to pull from to make that happen. And then on the price-related differential, again, that's a comparison between lower-value property being at, at market value compared to the sales versus the higher-valued property. And again, ideally, we'd like to be in a range of point nine eight to a one point zero three for that category. So again, pretty consistently, we're in that range, we've got, you know, two or three blips out of a twelve-year period, we're at a one point zero four. So when people talk about the overall quality of assessment, we're in a good range on our, on our assessed value to sales, you know, the equalization percent, we're in a good range on our coefficient of dispersion, and we're in a very good range with our price-related differential. And that's probably too much of an explanation, but that's, that's what we do during the course of a year, and that's how, and for anybody who's looking, we posted the old-to-new values, we're on the website a couple of weeks ago on the assessing page, we linked it in the newsletter, that it was available, and the new valuations are on the website, you can just check your own property card, and this will be reflected in the second-half bills for two thousand and seventeen. A new valuation for most people, but then more than likely a lower tax rate than will be projected right now.
Well, so much for Mayor's prediction of twenty minutes.
He's got to unplug him.
I know, he's running us over.
Well, there was no baseball game tonight, so we didn't get, we didn't have a reason. So hopefully that clears it up and gives you some talking points if people ask you some questions.
Good. Thanks, good, the city manager, huh?
Excellent job.
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay.
No, really, thank you, that was, I'd say I almost understand.
All right, so now.
Over again.
Now, would you repeat that?
New business?
I think we have it on YouTube.
We do that privately.
Under new business, request to schedule a public hearing on October twenty- Under new business, request to schedule a public hearing on October twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen, during the regular city council meetings, for a report on the progress of energy improvements project at Scott and Williams Building, twenty-two Stafford Street. I imagine that's where it is, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Make a motion to that effect, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay. So where we're at, we are at the staff report? Is that where we're at?
No.
Uh, no, I think we're on unfinished business.
I thought we added the election to the new business.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so where are we now?
We added taking up the primary election for the representative seat. It's not on here, but we're going to add it.
So you're going to add it and have it on?
Are we going to, do you want to make a motion?
I don't think we do.
You don't have to.
Mary, do we need a, if to take up the election, do we have to take a formal vote on that? Is that what you need to?
To have a special?
Yeah, to submit to the governor and council, we need an affirmative vote from the council.
I need to put it under unfinished business.
I'm going to make a motion.
No, it's going to be made tonight.
We can't have a sign.
New business? Yes, councilor?
I'm going to make a motion that the city of Laconia schedule a special election to fill vacancy. So I think that's all in Laconia, that's all, all Laconia, isn't it?
Yes, and we would request, in accordance with RSA, if I can help you with your motion, request in accordance with RSA six fifty-five, colon, eighty-one, that be a January ninth, two thousand and eighteen primary, and a February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen election.
What he said.
I'll second that.
Everybody understand? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now, if only one or two, we don't need a primary, right?
If there's only, if there's one each from the various parties, then the secretary of state will, after the filing period closes, determine that that will be the only election.
So the primary would be the election, then?
That, that date.
Instead of February.
It would no longer be called a primary, they would declare that a primary is not needed, and we would hold the election on the first date, the January ninth.
Right.
And the secretary of state will set filing deadlines and all that stuff?
Yes, once it's approved by governor and council, that falls into the state statute of when a filing period is, how long it is, and then how many days between the close of the filing period to when the election. So that's why we pick these dates in accordance with the RSA.
Okay, yes.
Just have one question. Should only one person file, we still have to have an election? Is that correct?
I believe so, because there's always an opportunity for write-ins.
Write-in, yeah. Okay.
Okay, and the unfinished business? Concerns regarding the city code, chapter one thirteen, animals as it pertains to restraint of dogs to an owner's property.
Okay.
Counselor?
If you recall, we took this up under our subcommittee, and we sent it to the attorney to get some wording. We've got the wording back, and now we're going to present it to council as to what our next step, what we want our next step to be with this. The proposed ordinance change that's come back, and I'm, can I read it into the?
Yes.
It's section one thirteen dash five, dogs to be leashed or enclosed. It shall be unlawful to intentionally permit any dog to run at large within the city of Laconia to this end when not on the owner's property. The owner or person responsible shall keep the dog on a leash. When outside on the property of the owner or person responsible, but when that person is not outside supervising the dog, it should be kept either on a leash or in a physical enclosure, not an invisible fence or electric shock fence. However, after first violation, in addition to a fine, the dog must thereafter be physically restrained at all times when outside. And this section shall not apply to hunting dogs while such dogs are under the supervision and control of the owner while hunting.
Okay.
So, the next step would be whether we want to refer this to?
So that was, that was the recommendation on a two-to-one vote out of committee to bring this language forward. So the next step would be bringing it to the full council, which is what is happening tonight. If the council decides that they would like to move that language forward, they would have to have a majority vote tonight.
Did you not get it?
I think everybody had a copy on there.
Yeah.
So if the council wanted to support that language tonight, it would need an affirmative vote to then move it forward, and we would have to have a first reading and then have a public hearing because you would be amending an ordinance. So if the council did not choose to move that language forward, then it would die tonight, and we would be done with it at this particular point. Not to say it couldn't be revisited sometime in the future, but you would be done with it at this point.
So we need to make a motion to speak on this, right?
So I think you would make a motion to approve the language as presented.
Can I, can I, can I make an alternative motion? Can I just move that we keep the ordinance as it is and not adopt this language? Just keep it as it is, leave it alone.
Can that be done?
I think that's, that's an affirmative motion. You're choosing to keep the language as it is. If the chair recognizes it, and you get a second, and then if the council wishes to vote on it, then that certainly is a valid motion.
Okay.
So you made the motion?
I want to keep, I want to keep the ordinance as it is.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other? None? All in favor?
No discussion?
Yeah.
You want to discuss it?
Yeah, no, I, I guess I'd like to, to, I'm suspecting that, that councillor's motion is going to pass, but I do think that in terms of just monitoring the issue and getting some reporting out on what's actually happening in the community, you know, one, one instance is a, is a, if it's you, it, I understand the citizen that brought forward the concerns and issues and has spent a lot of time, you know, advocating for the position, but I do think we now, if we feel that we need to go forward with something, have language which passes legal muster, but I, I haven't heard or seen enough that we're legislating around or enacting ordinances.
Were you here at the meeting when the public was here?
That's, I'm referring to that, councillor Bear, that I think the, the public sentiment has been more along the motion that's been made, and I guess all I'm suggesting is, you know, I think we should observe more of what's going on in the city as to whether the level of ordinance that's, that was prepared by a city attorney is necessary. I think at this point, we do have one serious incident, but I'm not sure that that is sufficient based on the input we've got from the public, and so I'm going to support the motion being made.
Yeah.
I, I just want to note, and I don't want to speak for you, chief, but I recall when we were addressing this issue, we asked you what kind of problems we were having in the city as it related to dogs running loose and that kind of stuff, and I think you reported that, that there wasn't a lot of activity that, that the police had to deal with, so.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, and I could provide you some.
Come up to the mic, please.
We, we, there are processes and plans in place to deal with that through other means.
Okay.
And one item is, if this is occurring, we do need people to report it, because that's the only way we're going to document it.
Right.
And we need to have a report, and, and the statistics are kept, but right now, the statistics don't bear that out.
I, I assume that you'll be attuned to what councillor Letman was talking about in terms of keeping us alerted about any potential problems that you're seeing out there on the, on the streets and throughout the city of Laconia. I just assume that you'll be doing that.
Yes, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, councillor Hamel. I spoke with the chief also, and I also got a report as far as dog bites in the city for the last few years, and I, I don't, I have to admit, although, you know, the gentleman had a, a problem, and it wasn't probably a funny problem, because that can be a scary situation, but from what I see of the dog bites in like this, in this particular year, there was fourteen of them, and most of them are, or a good majority, are from people not using their head. You reach into a car to pat a dog, you're going to get bit. You know, walking, if somebody's walking a dog on a leash and you'd walk by and you'd reach down and pat him without the owner's permission or something, people get bit. There was a vet that got bit, fireman got bit, the owner, an owner got bit. You know, kids, you know, playing at a barbecue with dogs, I, I don't see where the dogs running off of the property caused a lot of, of problems to change this. I, I think the ordinance, I mean, the, yeah, the ordinance that we have now covers pretty much everything. But the thing is, like what the city manager said, if you don't report it, the police can't act on it. And the fines are, they will increase from fine to fine. I mean, if, if it's a second problem, it's more money, if it's a third problem, and then it, it states that if, if you have that problem, then you got, you got to keep your dog restrained. But to, you know, change it now, I, I think what we have as an ordinance now would work. It just needs to be enforced, and it needs to be, if there's a problem that happens, it needs to be reported, so that the police can address it.
Anybody else like to speak to the issue? So we do have a motion on the floor. Mr. Bowne, seated by councillor Bear. All in favor of that motion? Raise your hand. Motion carries, six councillors voted in favor. Okay. Remember, folks, that if you have a problem with a dog, you better report it. Council comments?
I think we have any more?
We? Request to allow snowmobiles to use a sidewalk across the Weers Beach Bridge over the channel in the railroad. Yes, councillor?
I think we don't have enough information. So I think we would refer it to the Public Safety Committee, schedule a hearing for that, give notice to the snowmobile clubs, or somehow general notice to, to folks up at the Weers who have requested the plowing, and get information from them at that hearing so we can more thoroughly address the request. I don't know how they have, it's been going on for years that they haven't plowed, plowed that sidewalk so that snowmobiles can use them. And basically, based upon the report from the fishing games, I forget his name because I'm old and senile, that once you cross over the bridge, there aren't any recognized snowmobile trails, so you got, you cross over the bridge to nowhere, so I just think we need more information. It seems, based upon fishing games' recommendation, that the bridge is not, the water bridge is not really a viable alternative. So I don't know what the answer is, but I'd like to hear more from the snowmobile club, and I'd like to hear more from any, any other interested citizens who lives up at the Weers, or anywhere in the city for that matter, as to plowing that sidewalk and making a no-snowmobile thing. In the interim, it'll still say no snowmobiles, but we won't have any snow by the time we have a special meeting.
I thought that, that it had been reported that it was illegal.
It is.
It's illegal to run the snowmobiles there, so.
Yeah, it is.
Well, then, why, why, why go further?
Just a minute. Okay, councillor?
We can make our own exception to allow snowmobiles to use that portion of the Weers sidewalk.
No, you cannot, not according to the state. But anyway, councillor Hamel?
You're done, Dave, or?
No, I'm done. As usual, I'm done, I'm over with.
Okay. I, I think we ought to go along with the recommendation of fishing game and the state. I agree, the state said it's, it's not legal, and you're mixing pedestrians with snowmobiles. The damage it can do.
It's not their recommendation.
You said you were all done.
They say that the city can make an exception and allow snowmobiles over a particular sidewalk. That's what they said.
We make that recommendation, and a snowmobile hits a pedestrian, who's going to get looked at?
Councillor Hamel, they've been doing this for years.
Yes, the, the sidewalk was not plowed at the time, so a pedestrian couldn't walk on it.
Well, I think the issue goes further back, though, that if it's illegal on each side of the bridge, then it would only be legal on the bridge itself, and that's kind of a short route. That's a short route, you know?
That's kind of silly.
Counselor?
Hey, I'm just, I'm just suggesting that because.
I think, I think we should just do what the state says.
So do I.
Leave it alone.
And Pollock Works should make sure of it.
And if they want to cross it on their own, which they've been doing, have fun.
Councillor Letman?
So I'd like us to step back from the precipice here, because snowmobile, snowmobilers, and I, and I've never really done this, though from what I understand is one of the biggest, bigger than skiing in the area, and if we're going to cut off our tourism to the Weers on the winter, and we're going to cause issues for, for businesses that we're trying to promote.
They can cross?
Promote.
They didn't have our permission to cross before? So why change it?
Because the practice hasn't been that. When you say why change it, the practice has not been not to allow snowmobiles on the Weers Bridge during the winter. They intentionally didn't plow it so that the snowmobiles could use it. That was an act of the city.
I can't, I'm not a hundred percent sure that that was the reason it didn't get plowed, because no sidewalks out in the Weers got plowed. The, the snow plow wasn't out, I mean, the sidewalk plow wasn't out there. So I'm not so sure that it was done specifically just for the snowmobilers. It was probably a convenience thing. It was easier for the snowmobilers, it made it.
Well, we could get that answer from DPW.
We can.
They've already, but they, DPW has already done a study and made a recommendation.
But they haven't looked at it from a tourism standpoint, and I guess before we take an action to either do something or not do something, since we've been doing, we've invested four million dollars to improve the Weers and, and.
There's nothing there in the winter.
Well, all I'm saying is, why, why wouldn't you want to find out as to whether there's an issue that we're going to create before we vote to go one way or the other? You may very well be right, and if you're right, I'll support it, but if, before I vote on it, and you guys can overrule me, it's, I think we ought to have the piece of information, are we slitting our own throat by, you know, changing the practice there? I don't know. You don't know either.
So?
Well, I think Henry said it better than I could, so.
Who, who, who do we give it to? Who's going to look at?
I suggested Public Safety Committee.
I mean, if, if we could hear from the Snowmobile Association and from business owners that depend on that for their, you know, like Kate Farrows Grill as an example, you know, this is, you know, how much snowmobile business do they do? Is that going to cut off business to Farrows Grill? Would, if they came in and told us it was going to, you know, ruin their being open for year-round business in the Weers, would we want to take an action that's going to ruin it? Maybe it doesn't do anything at all.
Don't we need to get the state's recommendation, too?
Yes. If you're going to do one side, you got to find out from state and fishing game what their policy is.
Absolutely.
Can't be just the snowmobiles coming and say, yeah, we can.
They're going to, you know, they're going to.
No, that's right. We got to have an, an open hearing, which we consider everybody's perspective.
And the year-round residents that walk. I mean, don't forget about them either.
Yeah.
So you're going to push the people walking into the street so the, so the snow, uh, snowmobiles can use the sidewalk?
Well, I think.
I mean, either way.
As in many things, you know, whether it be Motorcycle Week or whatever, that there's a give and take to make the city work for everybody. You know, there's some people don't benefit from Motorcycle Week, but we all need to pitch in to make it work because it's good for the city. You know, I don't know whether over the course of the winter, whether snowmobiles add as much or more over the course of winter as Motorcycle Week does for the rest, because there are a lot of restaurants that I know you see snowmobiles parked outside, and they're, they're bringing tourist money into our area. I just don't want to cut off our nose to spite our face, you know, without getting information. I don't think there's, you know, any, we've got time, hopefully, before snow is on, on the books here, of, let's, let's hear it out. If, you know, if there's overwhelmingly, there's not an impact, then, you know, just go along the way councillor Hamel and is suggesting.
Yeah. You know, if this is such a big push by the snowmobilers, well, let them go to the state and fishing game and iron it out before they even come here.
But it's, I'm not taking the position of the snowmobiles, I'm taking the position of our local businesses that may be depending on snowmobile traffic to support them over the winter. You know, we've got several restaurants now in the Weers that stay open. You know, we've got several restaurants now in the Weers that stay open year-round.
But, you know, they can get to that side another way, is they come up the railroad tracks, shoo, on that side, and that's how they go on the other side of the bridge.
I guess, since it was almost 80-something degrees today, I guess, why can't we in two weeks get some information and make a decision before we get the first snow flies?
It's illegal to put snowmobiles on a sidewalk. I don't know what we're arguing about. That's the way it is.
But let's just send it to committee. Let's do that.
What's that?
We'll send it to committee. Otherwise, we'll just sit here for 30 minutes.
What committee?
Don't give it to me.
Common?
How it works.
There was, I got an email over the weekend. And just for the record, I know there was an article in today's paper, and the president of the snowmobile club was quoted, that no one in the city has spoken with them. I can tell you, I've spoken with him once, and Wes has spoken to him at least once, and I believe more than once. There is, was a meeting of the snowmobile club, Belknap Snowmobile Club, I think is the name, tonight at 7 o'clock over at the Bean Center. And I sent Tyson an email saying, unfortunately, we have a city council meeting tonight at the same time. So I don't know what, if anything, might come out of that. But I believe that if, you know, permission were to be given to allow them to cross the bridge, they would still need to work with the state for approval on the other side, because right now the state is saying that's not an approved area. So there's other steps. But if, in the interim, if this doesn't come to a head before snow flies, our position is that... The current position is that we are not allowing snowmobiles on the sidewalk, so it would take some different action by the council going forward to change that, where we would post that and say, you know, "Snowmobiles are allowed on the bridge." But then it would be up to them...
But that's room three. That's not our bridge.
I think we...
Sidewalks are...
Sidewalk, the sidewalk on the bridge, for whatever reason, is ours.
Well, they build it, we maintain it. But the bridge is a state property. I mean, we wouldn't pay to have that bridge.
Dealing with the sidewalk, if the council wanted to, they could allow beyond there, where they went. Is it a bridge to nowhere? Is it an approved route to go up Route 38 to Cumberland Farms, or wherever they may go from there? The state is saying they don't have an approved route. And even coming in from behind the power lines on White Oaks Road and by the Servcoaster, I don't think there's an approved path, from the state's point of view, to get them from that point to the bridge. So I think they need to work to connect to the bridge from both ends, but I think that would be on them in conjunction with the state. If you have something further, we'll come out of tonight's meeting.
Any approved thing is they ride up the railroad track. That gets them on that side of the bridge.
Okay. So where do we want to bring this?
Whatever Dave said.
I suggested public safety.
You don't think DPW...
Public Works probably should, because they've been doing all the best long.
That's you, and you're... I think you're the chair.
Public Works, no.
Public Safety.
I don't want it.
Well, that's candid.
Can I make a suggestion as if...
It's a Public Works problem.
Why not take a few minutes at the next council meeting and hear if the business owners... I look at it as, what are we doing to either help, hurt, or not do anything to help or hurt the business owners that depend on snowmobile and do... I don't really... I mean, we could take a very narrow view of it as legal or not legal. It's, I guess, are we hurting... Are we taking an action or not taking an action that's making it worse off for businesses that we've been trying to help promote for all these years? It's just...
Well, if somebody gets hurt, you know where they're going to come, they're right to the city.
I mean, again, I think they're... It's like the train during Motorcycle Week, Council Hamel pointed out, you know, it looks dangerous, but in, you know, your time on the council is nothing's ever happened.
So what committee do you want it on a public...
Let's do it as a committee of the whole, because we all have some input on it. Just have a moment, 15-minute block on our next council meeting for if there are people that want to come forward, whether they be business owners or, you know, just...
And are we targeting this specifically for property in the Weers along that stretch? Because I know those existing trails, like going behind T-Bones and Cactus Jacks, there's an existing trail there that is perfectly legal to ride up, and you'll see a lot of snowmobiles go there. So I don't want people to think that we're trying to change anything along the Union Ave Quarter. So I think if we tried to narrow it to, in that area of the Weers, Lakeside, Route 3, if you're a business who's impacted by winter snowmobile, provide some input for us.
Yeah. And if there is none, then you have your answer.
Okay. I just don't want people to think that we're trying to restrict where legal trails already exist.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The thing is, on that there, is how... They're not going to know where those snowmobiles came from. If they all... If a majority of them come up the railroad track and get into the Weers, which they can right now legally, you know, I mean, they can cross the street and go to Pharaoh's, which is probably illegal, but they do it. Or they follow the track down on Lakeside all the way to Meredith and stop wherever they want. So we really aren't going to know, did they cross the bridge? Or didn't... Or did they?
They are not.
So, I mean, if they got 15 snowmobiles in their yard, we don't know where they came from.
If they don't think...
Or how they got there.
Yeah, sure.
You just want to bring it up at the next council meeting?
Yeah, I'd have a 15-minute slot to see if there's any, you know, public input as to not the legality, but is there a commerce concern with that restriction that's going to be generated?
Is that okay with everybody here around the table?
Is it okay, Dan?
Okay. I hope we're in here.
You should be there.
All right, let's see.